I'd like to call to order the Maplewood City Council meeting for Tuesday, January 26, 2021. And first item is the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag.
To the flag.
States of America.
The United States.
And to the Republic.
And to the Republic.
For which it stands.
One nation.
Under God.
With liberty and justice for all. And justice for all.
Thank you. Can we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Crossley.
Here.
Councilmember Fockingham.
Here.
Mayor Greenberg.
Here.
Councilmember Partini.
Yeah.
Councilmember Phillips.
Yeah.
Councilmember Schmidt.
Yeah.
Councilmember Wood.
Yeah.
Mr. Mayor Coram is present.
Okay. Can we hear from our legal counsel with regards to the electronic nature of the meeting?
Yes, Mayor. I would ask that the minutes reflect that pursuant to Section 610.015 of the Missouri Sunshine Law, it provides that members of the city council who are not physically present in the city council chambers can still participate in this meeting and vote remotely on all matters because there still exists a national emergency and an emergency declared by St. Louis County related to the COVID-19 pandemic. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Item number five is the approval of the council agenda.
Motion to approve.
Second. We have a motion, a second. Is there any, are there any changes? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The agenda has been approved. Item number six is the first of two public forums. And I see a couple hands raised.
Yeah, just raise hand function and we will bring you in here in just a moment. Make sure you state your name and your address and limit comments to three minutes or so. It looks like we have Joshua. Let me bring him in. Joshua, are you there?
I'm here, Sean. Can you hear me?
Yep.
Hi, folks. Joshua Crea, 3339 Cambridge Avenue. Since my comments at the last council meeting regarding the Maplewood Police Officers Association use of the thin blue line symbol on their Facebook page, it's become clear the status quo in Maplewood must change. The MPOA's Facebook page response to the council's call to remove the thin blue line symbol brought with it the vitriol, ranker, and harassment that all too often follows attempted oversight of police officers. Instead of engaging with the community, the MPOA created a free-for-all wherein local and more disturbingly, non-local voices threatened our mayor, our council, and our citizens, reducing the conversation to an us-versus-them beatdown, and this must change. The fact that the Maplewood police officer who administers the MPOA Facebook page has been involved in multiple lawsuits alleging excessive force against minors and adults in both Ferguson and Jefferson County makes plain a lack of transparency from our police department. This, too, must change. We, the citizens of Maplewood, whose tax dollars support a police force that is charged with serving and protecting our community, request this change. With the recent installment of a previous city manager, Marty McCorkin, as a consultant for the city, one who will be involved in the hiring of our next police chief presumably, I ask him to be part of this change, just as I ask all of us, residents and city council members and police officers, to work together toward the change that accountability and justice must bring to us here in Maplewood. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Next would be, whoop. Hold on one sec here.
Beth, are you there? Are you there, Beth?
Yep, I'm here. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, great. Yeah, I'm Beth Newman. I live at 7401 Gaola Place. I just wanted to speak briefly tonight to voice my support of the council's recent statement condemning the use of the Blue Lives Matter flag and iconography on the Maplewood Police Officers Association Facebook page. For those who are unaware, the MPOA presents itself as the union for the Maplewood police force. I'm proud I live in a community where my electeds understand the difference between intent and impact. While the MPOA may plead their intent in using these images what was a display of brotherhood, their impact was not in alignment with their intent. This has been communicated to the members of the MPOA on more than one occasion by many, many citizens of Maplewood. Which brings me to the next point, which I will only speak about briefly as I'm currently drafting a detailed communication to Mr. Traxler, Chief Cruz, and Lieutenant Nybert in the near future. There seems to be a really big disconnect between the type of police department we are told we have and the type that is shown to us via the social media posts of the MPOA. In addition, I've recently learned that the president of the MPOA is an officer named Justin Cosma. One only has to do a very quick Google search of the name Justin Cosma, and one can clearly see this officer has a very troubling history, including when he was employed by the Jefferson County Sheriff's Office and the Ferguson Police Department. Again, I question who you tell us you are when you hire officers like Justin Cosma. So in conclusion, to the Maplewood City Council, again, I want to highlight my support for the official statement regarding the condemnation of the MPOA Blue Lives visuals. It was the right thing to do. To the Maplewood police force and the members of the MPOA, there is a lot that needs to be done to address the disconnect between who you tell us you are and who the MPOA shows us they are. This is a really big problem. I'm hopeful you'll listen to the needs of the community that you have sworn to protect and serve. Thank you.
Thank you.
Right, and next is, not sure, but last name is Schmidt. I'll put them on. Dave Ann Louise.
Oh, yeah, sorry. This is the one that has all of our family on it. Sorry about that. I'm Ann Louise Schmidt, 7403 Lomeyer. This is just along the same lines as all the other public comments so far. I was really concerned on, I commented on the Facebook post where they likened, they said that because y'all talked about the flag, then you were condemning the police department. And I don't feel like you are condemning and not supporting the police department at all. I think, Mr. Fockingham, you got it right, what you said on your Facebook message that the two just don't go eye to eye. And I was, people were mean to me. They stalked my Facebook page. It was just kind of really intense. They, they said, they brought in people from, that weren't Maplewoodians to come show the support for them wanting to fly the Blue Lives Matter flag. And I guess the reason that this, I guess my point I want to get to is that, this is really important to me. My son, my kids are black. We, and my son was scared to go outside till just recently, since George Floyd was murdered. He has been scared that he was going to get hurt by a police person. And so he would not even play in the backyard until recently. So it's taken a lot of work. And I feel like that the police department need, they didn't even answer our questions on, on their Facebook post. They brought in people to ridicule us, much more, yeah, they, they haven't made statements about what they think about how police are represented. That flag was flown at the, the attack on the Capitol. And I just feel like we need some more transparency, accountability, and dialogue if we're going to restore. I'm still shaken by the attack on the Capitol. And if we're going to work towards unity, which we desperately need, as I've seen, as I've talked to some other people about the flag, then we need to have some dialogue and just step up and not make fun of people and not throw mean words, but really talk through symbols and what they look like and how they're used. And I guess that's what I'm going to say. Thanks for listening.
Okay, thank you. Next.
You're muted, Sean.
Sorry, Brad can hear us.
Yeah, I can hear you.
Okay.
So I'm Brad Jackson, 2625 Hope Avenue, and the owner of Maple, Roughneck Beard Company, owner of Maple, whatever you're. The, I just wanted to mention really fast, not only, just echoing the sentiments of everybody else here, but not only is Justin Cosma the president of the MPOA, but he's actually the founder and organizer of such. If you look into the state registration, the MPOA is actually, was, he's the official registrant of the MPOA listed with a St. Charles address, which is a little outside of the realm of what we should be allowing here in Maplewood as well. But I just wanted to add that detail because not only does this seemingly problematic and disgraced police officer work here in the first place, but he's actually, you know, guiding our police force in a direction where we clearly don't want to go. And as far as what Ann was saying and the way that they mobilize their following, I think this is a kind of a known tactic in terms of ignoring accountability. And so any criticism of police forces is painted to be anti-police and then they, they, they throw that, you know, kind of bait out to their more intense, close followers and supporters in order to get those people to rally against anybody who would dare speak up for accountability. And I think that's what we're seeing here. But more than anything, I just wanted to point out that he is the actual registrar of the MPOA, St. Charles address, et cetera, et cetera. So that's all I have to add. Thanks for listening, guys.
Thank you. Next, please.
Carla DeRose. Hopefully I said that. All right, Carla, are you there?
Yeah, hi. Can you guys hear me?
Yep.
Yes.
Good evening. So I, again, just wanted to echo some previous sentiments and add a few points of my own. I was listening to the last council meeting live and appreciate both the citizen who brought up the issue and the thoughtful and completely reasonable discussion that our council had around that issue. I also appreciate the council coming, commitment to review city policies, like a social media policy. I mean, a social media policy is such a normal thing. I adhere to one for the nonprofit I volunteer with. So I think that that's, you know, a completely reasonable thing to expect a city employee to, you know, adhere to as a, as an employee. You know, clearly, there's a lot of conversation going on around the symbol of the Blue Lives Matter flag, but it's not just the matter of opinion as the MPOA statement might have led some to believe that it's just a few Maplewood residents who find the thin blue line flag problematic. I mean, it has been co-opted by white supremacist domestic terrorists. So there's not a lot of ground to stand on anymore when we saw them storm the Capitol. Having attended council meetings regularly for a number of years and having paid close attention to the city's annual budget, I agree with Sean Fockingham's assertion that our police department is very well supported. Their statement failed to mention that in the same meeting, our council unanimously approved three new vehicles for the department. Every other department in the city has basically had to tighten their belt, as far as I can tell, in recent years. Some have even seen staff reduction. But the police department's the only one that I know of where the budget and the staff has grown, you know, fairly considerably. And some of that is due to Prop P and the new tax, you know, new tax revenue there. But if you look at other police forces in the area, Maplewood is one of the largest, both in terms of police per citizen and by land area. And I just cannot recall seeing a budgetary request denied by council, so I'm really failing to see the claim that the department isn't supported. We're just asking for, you know, as a citizenry, I think we're just asking for clarity, transparency, and accountability. And the last thing is that this council and interim city manager Traxler both mentioned that this group, the MPOA, is not supposed to represent the city in any capacity. And so I have a little bit of a problem with the fact that their, their Facebook page does not indicate in any sort of way that they are not run, that it's not run by the city. I think that they should have to make it very, very clear that they are private citizens, you know, running a labor union and that they are, they are not affiliated with the city or the Maplewood Police Department's actual Facebook page. I was also pretty concerned in that statement. They attached a bunch of photos of Maplewood residents that were clearly obtained through official police business. And I have just some privacy concerns about the use of those photos that were, you know, gotten on city time. Do we, as a city, get written waivers or releases from citizens? And how about use, like, how is that translate to use on a private page run by private citizens in what is, I hope, their private time and not on city time? And, and actually, there is one last thing I want to talk about. We hear a lot from the Maplewood Police Department about the stringent hiring purposes that they use, or the stringent hiring process that they use. So given the issues that have come up with Mr. Cosma, I have, you know, some clear concerns about what our hiring process looks like and what that will look like going forward to make sure that we don't continue to hire people with so many complaints about police brutality. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? It looks like there's another.
Yeah, we have one more.
And let me interject. Please keep comments to three minutes. So, go ahead.
Yeah. All right, Laney Schenkelberg, can you hear us?
I sure can. Can you hear me okay?
Yep. Yes.
Great. So I, I agree with everything that has been said so far, so I will try not to be repetitive, although Carla did steal my thought a little bit. I, I too am very alarmed to learn about the previous behavior and the complaints and the lawsuits against one of our officers, Justin Cosma. And I do have questions and would love if the city council and our city managers and staff could really look into what kind of oversight we have in terms of hiring for our officers. They are such a huge community, representation of our community and of our city. And, and it doesn't take much investigative skill to uncover all of the very, very troubling behavior of this officer. So would love to hear about that in the future, what kind of oversight we have, or the city has to hiring and, and maybe any opportunities for improvement so we could avoid this happening again. Thank you.
Thank you. It appears that there aren't any other raised hands, and there'll be another opportunity at the end of the meeting, be a second public forum. So we're going to move on then to the announcements. Are there any announcements?
I do have a couple. Maplewood City and Mid-County Chamber are partnering together for the Food Ambassador Program, can't be, which is a community-led program that pairs a block of neighbors with a local restaurant for breakfast, lunch, or dinner to help promote our restaurants during the winter months. So details can be found on Mid-County Chamber website, for one place. I know that one place it is. And I wanted to give an update on the Sweet Tooth Tour because it was debatable about whether it was going to be, and it is going to be, and it's February 20th, and there's two sessions. One is 8:30 a.m., the other one is at 1:00 p.m. And you can register online for that as well. And then one little fun fact I thought was the St. Louis Community College is continuing education, is offering a presentation on January 29th online called Maplewood Trendy Suburb Born a Fire. So you can register online for that, too.
Okay.
That is all I have, Mayor.
Are there any other announcements? We'll move on to approval of the January 12, 2021 city council meeting minutes.
Motion to approve.
Second. We have a motion, a second. Are there any modifications?
Yes. I'd like the minutes to be reflective of during our council communications, while we were discussing any steps that we could take to voice our displeasure with the MPOA Facebook page. We had also discussed our social media policy and our request to get updates on what that social media policy and if it applies.
Okay. The minutes will be modified to show that information. Are there any other changes, modifications, opposed? We have a motion, a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any, any opposed? The meeting minutes have been approved. Item number nine is an ordinance of the city council of the city of Maplewood, Missouri authorizing the city manager a contract between the city of Maplewood and St. Louis County for mosquito and rodent control services.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion, a second. Is there any discussion?
Yes, I have a quick question for Jackie. I work for the Department of Public Health, which is the entity involved in this contract. Should I abstain from this vote?
If you have any concerns, then yes, you should.
Okay, I think I'll go ahead and abstain from this since I'm a direct employee.
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
And I just wanted to add that there's a phone number on the county website, Vector Control, that you can request that you're, that's praying not be done at your property. I have a koi pond that's directly on Marshall, and it would be devastating if, if that was flogged and, and we lost our fish. So you can opt out otherwise. They only, they do Larvicide. They also do Adelticide, but only when they've determined that the number of certain types of mosquitoes are in abundance that warrants that. So I've had several discussions with, with Vector Control before. One of the things, Sarah, I noticed that they mentioned that they try and use, do they use a natural permethrin? Do you know?
Oh, this is beyond my expertise, but I know which staff member you need to ask. So if you want to send me any questions about the program, I can send them onto the right health department staff if you'd like.
Okay. I just noticed that, you know, the synthetic version is a lot more toxic than the, the natural version, but the natural version costs a lot more. So, but I thought I saw mentioned that they, they do use a, a natural formulation. So I'll, I'll follow up on that with you.
Okay.
So is there any other discussion? May have, okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Second reading and ordinance of the city council of the city of Maplewood, Missouri authorizing the city manager to execute a contract between the city of Maplewood and St. Louis County for mosquito and rodent control services.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion, a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion will move on to its third and final reading at the next meeting. Item number 10 is an ordinance of the city council of the city of Maplewood, Missouri amending ordinance number 5478, Chapter 36, Parks and Recreation, Article 3, Park Rules, Section 3687, Selling Advertising Posting Signs.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion, a second. Is there any discussion? Okay. Fave, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Did we, did anybody want to review what Maple Goods comments were?
So this is a different ordinance?
Yeah, this isn't related to that.
And it, and Attorney Graves included our change to allow this even outside of COVID, so.
Okay.
Okay. Any other discussion? All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Second reading and ordinance of the city council of the city of Maplewood, Missouri amending ordinance number 5478, Chapter 36, Parks and Recreation, Article 3, Park Rules, Section 36-87, Selling Advertising Posting Signs.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion, a second. Those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? This motion will also move on to its third and final reading at the next meeting. Item number 11 is old business. Are there items that we have listed here that need discussion?
I think, were we going to work our way down the list that was there, perhaps?
I think that makes sense.
Okay. Then let's start with the Equity Commission discussion.
Well, isn't the dog park one the first one on the list?
I think that's the first in Anthony's memo, but not in this old business list. But maybe it should be included in the old business.
Old business items.
We can start with the dog park, then.
I see what, I see what you mean, Karen.
I had a question. Did we actually ever receive what other cities are doing? I don't think we ever received that information. I think that's what we were waiting for.
If we did, it's been so long. I don't remember if we did see it. I think we did.
I don't remember seeing other, other rules and regulations from other municipalities.
I will check on it. If it's been done, I'll make sure each get a copy. If it hadn't been done, I'll make sure it gets done.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion on dog park rules? Is the next item, the Equity Commission, I'm following the, into here.
Oh, yeah. Why don't we? Yeah, there's two different things here, so I guess.
We should follow, you should follow the agenda.
Okay.
Suggestion to you, yes.
Food, ordinance.
So I think the status for that one is still the is actually, is, so is Councilmember Crossley drafting a purpose statement for the RFP?
Yeah.
Councilmember Fockingham provided some information to Mr. Corcoran about the RFP, and then I just sent the draft language that, for the commitment, the resolution on commitment to racial equity earlier today. And when we talked about that, Anthony was going to work it up into resolution-style language and send it to us as a draft and then put it on the earliest meeting after we got to review it.
Any other discussion besides an update on the status?
I will get that purpose statement to you all by the end of tonight, since I know it's late.
All right. The next item is the food pantry ordinance.
I'm, so some of the Maple Good leaders were kind enough to discuss their edits with me last night, and then they've sent them all to the council for review. I don't know if we've all had a chance to look at them yet, but I think there are some easy compromises for us to make with their changes. Try to pull these up. But if folks haven't had a chance to But if folks haven't had a chance to read them yet, then maybe we need to review them and then bring this topic back up at our next council meeting. Does that sound okay? Okay, all right. Thank you all.
And the next item that we had discussed previously is the marijuana ordinance.
So I thought we had, we, we wanted more time to review something, but I, I gotta be honest, I don't remember what we were supposed to be reviewing for this, and it wasn't in the minutes.
I thought we were supposed to be deciding if, like, taking personal time to think about whether or not we wanted to, like, keep it against the law, but not have any civil or criminal penalties or decriminalize it. Was that Jackie, the?
That was my question. That's what I needed clarification on to move forward.
So are we ready to discuss that?
I guess from my perspective, it's six on one hand, half a dozen another. I don't know if one opens us to, like, legal issues that I'm unaware of.
Like, if there's no legal issues, then I land on the side of decriminalizing. Of saying, like, it's not against the law.
So what you, Councilmember Cardini, it, it's really saying, is it against the ordinances of the city of Maplewood? Which is distinct from state law.
Which is different from decriminalizing.
Okay, so forget that word.
I just want to make sure that I'm understanding.
So there, I, I think there are two kind of options. One is to say it's not against the laws of the city of Maplewood. The other is to say it's against the laws of the city of Maplewood, but we won't enforce it unless or we won't have enforcement unless. And the draft that Councilmember Cosley had provided was the, the latter. It was, it's still against the law, but we won't enforce it unless.
And it would still be, it's illegal unless, right? The same parameters. Is that, is that, can you do that or no? So like possession of thirty, under thirty-five grams is not illegal, but above that is is that what we would be doing?
You would, sure, you could say that, but I would suggest that for the purposes of your ordinances, that you wouldn't that you, you wouldn't put a, a, like a gram on it, you know what I mean? Because either the city is going to enforce it, or it will go to state and then state would decide. Like, if it's above X number of grams or whatever, then you would say it could go to state, but the city of Maplewood wouldn't be enforcing it.
I'm sorry, so just to clarify, if it's, if it's, if it's legal here to possess marijuana, we're saying it's legal no matter how much you have or what your intent is?
I mean, I'm saying you can put limits on that, but what I
Oh, yes, I'm sorry, the phrase. Yeah, yeah, yeah. And so, okay, so the phrasing would be that anything above that, or? Yeah, you could clarify that if it is illegal in the state of Missouri, right? So unless medical privilege for it. So even if our officer choose, they could issue a Maplewood ordinance, but they could refer it to the state to prosecute?
That's right, that's right. And that would be the Wesley Bell's office, and his office is a matter of policy, isn't enforcing when it's under. And I can't off the top of my head tell you what that number is, what the grams or whatever is, but there's some threshold where if it's under that, they're not enforcing it, and I can find that out.
And so it seems the real difference is in whether or not you can collect a fine, right? And so to me, I think fines are problematic for a lot of reasons, so I guess I would be in favor also of the, the legalizing aspect, if that's the real difference.
The, the only reason that I wouldn't want to legalize it is if there's an arrest that involves a firearm or other controlled substances and marijuana is included in that, especially with the intent to distribute. I, you know, the question is, do we want to include that in the charges? And actually enforcing a case like that as opposed to someone on the street that just happens to be in possession, you know, without other criminal activity associated with it?
I feel like those are all different charges, though, right? Like, intent to distribute is different from possession, is different from possession of a different substance, is different from possession of a firearm lawfully or unlawfully. And so the piece of that, I think, that, like, would potentially be removed from that puzzle is the possession of marijuana. But if there was still an intent to distribute possession of a firearm and possession of another controlled substance, then like those three things may be considered. Additionally, I believe Wesley Bell's office limit, or it's the circuit attorney in the city, is a hundred grams. But they have also explicitly carved out exceptions when there's intent to distribute and firearms or weapons involved. So I don't know that the possession piece of marijuana in this would necessarily affect a case like that in terms of the volume, in terms of the types of charges that we could bring.
It's the, it's the state that's bringing the charges and not the city. Just for clarification.
So are requesting that our legal counsel put together an ordinance based upon our comments?
That would be my request and that we have no fine. And capture the comments sort of shared by Councilmember Partini and Councilmember Schmidt.
Just a quick question. Did we not discuss or need some follow-up on what the ordinances were in the surrounding communities? So that it's not a patchwork of differences between the city and, and Maplewood and Richmond Heights and et cetera?
So I, the city one is from two thousand thirteen, and I may have that. And I believe it's very similar to, okay, it's similar to Webster Groves in that there is a fine, but the fine is higher and the money goes to a specific mental health board advocacy group. And then the Webster Groves has a fine as well, the Webster Groves ordinance has a fine as well, but no other community in St. Louis County, I believe, has addressed this. I would love, again, to see them come along, but I'm, I'm not sure where the political leadership is on that. And so I think just like the nature of our fragmented region is that it will be a patchwork unless we're able to model for our neighbors.
I think I also read that the city, even though they, like, that they're also, one circuit attorney is also not prosecuting up to a higher amount than is in their ordinance. So even if the ordinance is similar, like, the enforcement's different, so seems all over the place.
And then one final piece of this that I didn't want to lose track of is I would love, I, I would like to formally request a legal opinion on our ability to expunge any records for marijuana possession that resulted in charges or convictions by the city of Maplewood, if that's available to us legislatively.
I, Councilmember Cosley, I can tell you, I have not specifically done that research, but the state provides for expungement provisions. And I suspect that I'm going to find that those trump the, whatever the city would want to do. I can also tell you that I did some looking at the city of Kansas City. I don't know if you looked at their ordinances, but the mayor decided, I can't remember if he called it a pardon or can't remember what he called it, but he basically, the mayor is, and I don't know, I would also have to see if the city Maplewood has the ability to do that. But said that he basically pardoned the, those crimes under the ordinances. And the city of Kansas City, again, this is not a formal legal opinion, I'm just sort of giving you the background. The city of Kansas City ultimately had to decriminalize their, under their ordinances because they couldn't. They, they felt those two things were not consistent. They couldn't pardon for, and continue to legalize for others. Do a formal expungement opinion for you.
That would be great. And if it's not us, if there is another body within the Maplewood government structure that has that power, if you could identify that, that would be helpful as well. Thank you.
So on the, for the purposes of the ordinance, I, I'm not sure that I, did you land on what you want me to do?
I think we only had three, so.
We need more people to weigh in on whether it should be against the law or not against the law.
Oh, yeah, I'll chime in. I agree with Councilmember Crossley. And, yeah, I think it should be decriminalized, no fines.
I, I would like to see the language of the, the ordinance before making a final decision myself. But in, I'm in general agreement with the concept.
I'm supportive of making the change, as long as we have the ability to and, and that it doesn't pose any additional legal risk to the city.
Yeah, I agree along with that, too.
Okay, so I'll do an analysis and draft an ordinance for you related to decriminalization versus the alternative, which was just saying that there's no penalty for it. Is that accurate? Okay, thanks, everyone.
Sorry, wait, Jackie, did you just say you're going to draw up two versions?
No, I said I'll do, I said I'll do the ordinance, make sure I do a legal analysis for you as well. That you, it's my understanding you all want to make sure that there's no possible liability that comes from decriminalizing. Thank you. I, I don't want to do all of the work without understanding where you want to go, so I Okay, thank you.
Okay, next item is the citizen in business survey. For those that did not tune in to our work session, we talked with two different consultants that would provide coordination of those services. And we have information, they made a presentation, we asked questions. And so we are going to discuss that amongst ourselves in, and we, we talked about two possibilities. One was doing it in closed session, but does anyone feel that there's a need to, to do this in closed session?
I don't know that it warrants a closed session.
My question was a legal one in nature, and we didn't have an attorney present when I asked it. So it was just, I didn't know in the past, sometimes when we've done RFPs, they have been because of contract issues. I'm not saying I want it to. I just wanted to ask so we could put it correctly on the agenda for next time.
Yeah, if it's about negotiating a contract, then it should be in the closed session.
Okay, so we will address it then in closed session, but
So are we at the point of negotiating a contract, though, or are we at the point of choosing a vendor? Because I believe first we have to identify a vendor and then begin contract drafting and negotiation. That's like the normal RFP cadence I'm accustomed to.
That makes sense to me. So we would have an open discussion with regards to the selection of the vendor, and then when we get to the point where we're going to negotiate the contract, then we'll do that in closed session. Okay, does, is everyone in agreement with that sentiment? Okay, the next item is the Maple Leaf newsletter. It discussed issuing, issuing it in a greater frequency. And we talked about the content. Were there action items associated with that?
Yeah, I think, I think we all kind of had thoughts on the email we received from Laura Miller, and so it seemed appropriate to bring it here to discuss with all of us and in front of the public. I think one of the issues was so was the idea of being able to opt out of a paper copy. It looks like the majority of the cost, about sixty percent, goes to the cost of mailing, so I think, you know, the concern that was raised during our work session was, you know, making sure, though, that we, you know, are really getting a paper copy to people, you know, who may not get it electronically or whatever. And so it seems like the really easy fix is that anytime, you know, you're applying for an occupancy permit, you know, every adult in that household would have to choose paper or elect out. So even if, you know, the question was raised, well, what if I elect out, but my husband, and I get it for both of us, and they don't get it, but so if you elect out on your occupancy permit, but, you know, the other adult does it, and you would still get a paper copy. It seems like that would be a really easy way to do that.
Does anyone have thoughts on that?
I feel like this feels a little overly complicated. I want to make sure that this is something that our staff can effectively manage and maintain over time. I'm all about opting out, you know, for, like, sustainability issues and mail clutter, but
But this is the thing, to me, it's not overly complicated, I guess. It's, to me, it's an additional question on your occupancy permit, and so it would just be that that would be resetting it. I mean, imagine, I don't know. I mean, if people, if I'm in the minority here, but I just think it's pretty wasteful, you know. Some people, you know, to force someone to get a paper copy of something, too, that they don't want.
Can I ask a question, Marty? That you may or may not know, Marty, if, if, like, let's say we were going to query the occupancy permit computer system, like, once every three months. Say we're sending the Maple Leaf quarterly, and we're looking for any new occupancy permits since the last three-month permit. Do we pay for that query? Okay, because I thought there were some queries that we actually had to pay for because of the, the way the system is.
And, and we don't, we don't provide an option right now to opt out of the newsletter. You can opt out of other things, but the newsletter is not one of them. And we can easily do that, if that's what the council would like to see happen.
That sounds like the, the, the mayor's report for the next newsletter is to, you know, talk about the, giving people the option to opt out. I think it need, the next one needs to be sent to everyone with the explanation that, you know, here's what we're trying to accomplish and why, and, you know, and, you know, hopefully everyone will get that information and can make a decision along with the process that we talked about with regards to the occupancy permit. But since, since everyone is going to get a copy of it, that would be a good place to address it.
I'm, I'm sure, I'm not sure I understand what you want done with the occupancy permit.
No, I was just saying that, like, going forward, the concern that, that we had, if you do allow, allow an opt-out is that we have a significant number of rental properties, and so it's the idea of, like, that address opted out, that then the next occupant wouldn't get it. And so my thought is, you know, every time you turn over that rental, a new person has to go apply so that it would reset, and then that person could determine if they want to opt out or not. So every time, you know, I mean, it is an additional, you know, task for whoever's doing that, but I feel like it could be pretty, like, minimal work involved because you would just be going to another database and adding someone, you know, adding an address back in.
Go ahead.
What if you just always add new occupancy permits into the database? And then there's like a different way you opt out. Like, you go to this, like, go click here on this website and enter your email address or enter your mailing address or name or whatever, if you want to opt out, and then those are rectified every time it goes out.
Either one of those are possible. Or what Jenny is suggesting. Either one of those, I think, can be done.
And I guess I would defer to staff to tell us what's easiest for them. They, you know, and they may have a different idea that's even better, but.
Yeah, I think from an equity perspective, that you, you probably want to make sure it's on the, on the, on the permit. Just so that if they don't have access to the internet or something, that you know, that, that they can opt or in or.
I did want to discuss the, giving some space to the school district or pieces of the school district.
To who? To who did you say? I'm sorry.
Either MRH or particular pieces of the school district. So the, the school district does have, like, a really robust communication program. Um, so the, the school district does have like a really robust communication program. But there's a particular population that I was most interested in getting access to the Maple Leaf and that is not captured in the school district's communication program. So the school district only has access to people's information after a child is enrolled in the district, which often, um, happens at kindergarten. And so they miss the zero-to-five or zero-to-six population. And this is the population that is served by our Parents as Teachers Program. And Parents as Teachers, uh, and the school district work really hard to try to connect with new families to the district. Um, I've talked to Vince Estrada about trying to figure out a way that we could, like, always, you know, on a regular basis, be giving new occupancy permit information to him. But this is a target population that is not part of school district communications. And I just, I, I view the school district as like a pretty official, like, they're a taxing entity in our, in our, um, community. Like, we all pay taxes that go to the city and that go to the school district. And, and so to me, they're like really different from like a private club. They're like a, a community-serving, public institution taxing entity. And so like I would be in favor of giving at least the Parents as Teachers Program a slot because they run like every month, during normal conditions, every month, they have a playdate up at the school. They provide services, they can do assessments for, um, students that might need, like, early interventions. They also, right now during COVID, they are providing, like, resource boxes to families with zero-to-five kiddos. And that is, um, the population that they would, you know, and that is, may overlap with the population that is hard to read, for the school district to reach, is renters who are new to town, who might have young kids, who may or may not have, like, easy internet access. Um, and so that's what I was would have wanted to advocate for, having, having a spot in the Maple Leaf.
Um, Councilmember Partini, is that something that is like pretty predictable? Maybe what they would want to post that we could just incorporate into our sort of, you know, certain additions we post, that kind of thing?
Um, I don't know what they, I mean, they would probably want to post, like, here's how to get in touch with us. Here's how to pick up this box, or here's how to, or here are the playdates, or whatever. Um, what do you, do you mean include in what?
Well, I know, like, we had asked for, and Laura had given us sort of the list of what, like, this issue usually contains this subject and this. And so I guess it seems it would be easier if, you know, in the, um, this issue, you know, if they have certain things they typically want to inform people of. I mean, I'm not sure it should be a vehicle to share all their information, but if it could share, like, hey, we're Parents as Teacher, we offer these services, you know, go to our website or call us at this number, that we could just sort of repeatedly post without, you know, Laura having to contact someone to get, you know, a whole article. You know what I mean?
And I don't think, yeah, I mean, I'm envisioning, you know, like, sometimes some of our departments, they have like a whole page, and they have a ton of white space. Um, I'm thinking, like, you know, PAT gets like a box, or MRH slash PAT gets like a little tiny space where they put like the dates of their playdates, or, um, you know, whatever little information that they want to get to that particular population.
Um, Barry or Marty, doesn't the Maple Leaf have, um, library information in it?
Yes.
Okay, so I, I don't, I have no problem with, um, putting information from any taxing entity uh, in, in the, in the Maple Leaf. It just benefits everyone. Whether it's a small blurb or no blurb, or, you know, a column like the library does on, on a regular basis. There should be no reason why they can't, can't, can't put information in the, in the Maple Leaf. I, I think it would be a great idea, um, only because there's a lot of residents in Maplewood that don't have kids in school and still maybe want to know information about the school district that they're paying for every year, uh, with their property tax dollars. So I, I, I think that's a, I think that's very wise, and I think we should, should allow the school, um, some, some space in the Maple Leaf, for sure.
Yeah, I largely agree with Councilmember Fockingham, um, as someone who doesn't have kids, uh, period, or in the school district. Um, I think that would be just, you know, interesting insight for me. Um, I would want to know for sure that this program has an MRH staff person that can generate content so that we can, you know, make sure that that's happening on a semi-regular basis. But, um, I think that sounds like a good idea, and I am happy to move forward with that.
Uh, I would like to limit the content, uh, to not leave it completely open. If there's a tax issue coming up, uh, it's, you know, it would be, you know, it, it wouldn't be appropriate for us to let them, uh, uh, advocate, uh, on, on the city, you know, publication.
I'm sure that they follow NEC guidelines about about advocacy around their bond and tax measures. And would just be putting information in their programs and stuff.
I think it's a big difference between what Councilwoman Partini was telling us about. She wants to put in the, the preschool program versus giving them a blank check to whatever they want to put in. That's, that's totally different, uh, concept there, and you've got limited space. So I think you need to think about that in terms of, of what you're trying to accomplish with your newsletter. If it's put in a, a blurb or a box, or whatever you want to call that in the newsletter for, um, the, uh, early childhood center or preschool, I think we can accomplish that. If you're gonna say, hey, we want a whole page to the school district, then that's a whole different ballgame.
Well, and I know Laura, she indicated, and she does, she already, she works with Ed Rich, and like, she'll include things. You know, I think in the newsletter, sometimes that the school district would want us to share. So I do agree that narrowing the focus to what, um, Councilmember Partini suggested to a taxing entity that currently really has no, share information through its own entity to, to get to the people, um, that are its target audience. It seems like we have the vehicle to do that, and so it makes sense. And I was just, I was trying to make it a little more simple for Laura and putting that together, that if there are, you know, so she knows, like, you know, in this, in this newsletter, it'll be this type of information, you know, just to make it easier for her, but.
Laura's here, if you want to hear her comments.
If she wants to share.
Yeah, just real quick, I, when, when, when you, when I talk about giving the, the school district space, it would be just like the library. It's like they post dates of upcoming events and maybe post, uh, a link for some from information, you know, new to the district, want to learn more, go here.
Okay.
That kind of thing, not a, not an op-ed, uh, or a promotion, just something that, that can reach more people than just.
Yeah.
Just, uh, uh, the, uh, you know, the school demographic, so that, that's all I was saying. It's just like, that, that the library doesn't post anything about, that there's no op-ed by them, and there's no tax stuff. It's just dates and, you know, upcoming programs, and that's it.
But just one comment with the library. One comment with the library, if we don't have room for what they want to put in, it doesn't get put in.
I mean, do they know their space ahead of time? Like, are they like, here, you have a half-page, do what you want?
Yes, they do.
Yes.
So I don't see why it would, I mean, could we do the same with the school district or with the?
I, I'm just saying, as long as, as long as, as long as we still have control, yes. The answer to that question is yes.
I, I was also curious, because I think, you know, as part of our discussion at our work session, um, I think the other thing that came up was possibly having space for, like, accounts, for council member communication. But, you know, the email we got, basically, we filled a space, and you can only add in four-page increments. And so I was actually just curious what, um, if we could figure out what that cost would be. Um, I'm not saying I necessarily want to add it, but I think it's helpful to know, um, what that cost would be.
We could find out. I mean, turn here and I ask Laura a question. You could go to six pages, couldn't you? I think there's the opportunity to go to, you could go with the, the four-page layout you have now with a two-page insert. One page front and back.
And I'm assuming that would change the, the postal cost?
That will change the post cost as well as the printing cost.
But if we get people to opt out, then we could save some money there. Just thinking ahead.
Good, so now I can write an op-ed, too, like the mayor?
Why don't we start simple and keep it the same space and the same printing and cost? And like, see if we can squeeze in a tiny amount of space for the school district. And then we can play with, like, formulas about, like, price.
Let's give it a try.
Yeah, I mean, I just wanted to know. I mean, you're the person who raised that issue, and so I, I just was curious what the actual cost was. Because to me, if it's, you know, another $3,000, it's kind of over, right? Like, it doesn't seem, um, especially for increasing issues. So I, I don't need to discuss it in detail, I just wanted to know how much.
Okay. Are, are we, are we all in agreement, then, that we'll try to squeeze a box in here for the school district? Does that meet everybody's needs to, to start out with?
Yeah.
Yes.
Sure.
That's fine, we'll be, we'll give it a whirl.
Okay, so, uh, item number twelve, then, is Cal.
I'm sorry. Sorry, sorry. Uh, I think one other thing you had brought up in your email, Mayor Greenberg, was the idea of an electronic sign. And I guess, um, uh, I don't know if you want to discuss that. I guess my only concern is, um, Richmond Heights has one, but like, it's at a major four-way intersection where you're always stopped there and can read it. And I mean, I know there's a light outside City Hall, but there's not.
I, I think that's, that's advantageous because there isn't an intersection. You know, uh, I think the, the presence of an electronic sign at an intersection would, would be a, a safety hazard.
Well, I actually think it's a safety hazard the other way, because then people are looking at the sign and not at the stop. Apparently, people have trouble stopping at anyway, and also, you know, just driving. Like, if I look over to read the sign while I'm driving, that's probably not safe.
Well, I've, I've been down this road before, so I'll let Marty, uh, address that.
Well, I can, I can say that I think the reason why we currently don't have one, because we did talk about it at one point, is that our ordinances do not allow for it. And so, um, since our ordinance don't allow for it, that, why should we, um, you know, the, um, uh, city government have a sign and no one else can?
You're exactly right.
Well, I, I, my personal feeling, it's a public service. It's not an advertisement, and it could be used for the school district and the, the city.
Just for his.
I've tried to read that sign at Richmond Heights. I can see one word, because I am watching the road. And if I'm driving down Manchester, I've tried to look over at City Hall, I can't do that. I mean, I'm sure I'm not the only one. I think it is a safety. You can't read those kinds of signs. They're just, I don't think you can.
And that is already a very dangerous intersection, so, um, with multiple, uh, school crossings when school is in session, so.
Which parents have already identified that people run the light there all the, all the time, so.
Yes.
Just getting caught up on the history here, is there a particular reason why our ordinances don't allow this type of sign? Do we, is there a particular issue that was raised?
Marty, I'm not, I, I don't know about the history. You would probably, obviously know a lot more than I do about that.
Um, the, the history behind it was, uh, you couldn't have flashing lights. You couldn't do anything to distract people, uh, in terms of signage. And there was, there was research done on what other cities allowed. And at that point in time, that was by far what most cities outlawed, were the, what we refer to as message boards, electronic message boards. And so when the city's ordinance was created, that's how that came about. And up to, up to this point, the only crest, request for a message board has come at, from time to time, from the city council.
And the reason that I originally brought it up is that, uh, I think it was when Pioneer became national city. I think at that point, they got rid of their, their sign, and we could have, there's a possibility that we could have had it. And so I was thinking that, you know, it's worth considering, but, uh, you know, I, you know, we're, we're talking about the, uh, the Maple Leaf and, and communicating with our, you know, our citizens and other people that, uh, you know, that drive through. I was hoping to put it far enough to the west of the intersection that, uh, you know, that it would not become a distraction, that they would, they would have read it. I, and, and then they would have plenty of time to be attentive to the, uh, you know, to the intersection and the traffic. But, uh, you know, I'm, I'm not invested in it, but, you know, in the interest of getting the word out, if there's, if Kiwanis has a pancake breakfast, which we're not going to have this year, you know, I'd like for people to know that. You know, so there's advantages and there's disadvantages, and, uh, you know, say, uh, obviously, we should err on the side of safety.
So it sounds like unless we change our ordinances, our decision's already been made for us, um, unfortunately.
Well, we could always change that, but, you know, we would have to want to for public, you know, for public service messages. So. Yeah, between driving and texting and trying to read something else, you know, uh, I understand that that can be a problem.
Yeah.
Yeah.
If, if we were done with that now, um, I guess my question is, you know, we had discussed under the old business heading that we would be able to discuss any old business, even if it wasn't listed on the agenda. Is that, is that accurate, Attorney Graves?
Well, we also have council communication, so we can, you know, it can be done there, too.
Is it a problem to bring it up now? Is it better for me to do it in council communication?
It would be better under council communication.
Okay, I'll do it then. Oh, which is next. Okay, we'll just say.
Next item is council communication. Would you like to start, Jenny?
It doesn't, I should have looked at the agenda. Um, yeah, so in our last meeting, we, uh, discussed the, uh, blue line flag that was on the Maplewood Police Officers Association Facebook page. And, um, a lot has happened since that discussion, and clearly tonight, we received a lot of comments. And I, you know, I've really been reflecting a lot on, you know, what's occurred since that discussion. Frankly, it's been keeping me up at night. Um, and I have prepared some thoughts that I have. Um, if you guys are okay with me, um, sharing them with you. It's, please bear with me. It's, it's, it's a little bit lengthy, but I just, I felt the need to share each of these points. Um, and I'll try not to read it, but that made it go, make, make it go faster. So over the past year, this council has, uh, really made a commitment to equity um, to begin the process of ensuring that our city policies and our procedures, our employees, our elected officials, um, that are free of bias, or at least we're working to acknowledge our bias and, and eradicate it. And so, um, in that going forward, we would make sure to apply an equity lens to policy and procedure. Uh, and so when that issue was raised in the public forum section, um, specifically the idea that a thin blue line flag has increasingly been, become associated with white supremacy. Um, and more recently, in the disturbing attack on our Capitol, that, that really, to me, seemed to fall squarely within that discussion of equity. And so I thought that Councilmember Crossley, very professionally and correctly, um, identified what was shared in the public forum section. Um, you know, and, you know, all she did was simply ask, you know, can we request if they would consider removing it? And, you know, we were immediately told, you can't tell them what to do, it's personal. And, you know, then we had a discussion, what can we do? And I think the gist of that conversation was just that, um, that we were concerned about its use, um, even in a personal page, because it could affect our community members' feelings, um, of safety and trust in the officers that serve them. Um, during this conversation, some of us may have inadvertently incorrectly referred to it as a Blue Lives Matter flag, but I didn't hear anyone in that conversation say it's only used in that manner, or that the use of that symbol made those officers racist, or that we didn't support our officers. or that the use of that symbol made those officers racist, or that we didn't support our officers. Um, you know, really what we asked was can we share some resources? Can we offer some information? Can we offer our thoughts and, and have them consider it? So, I mean, especially because it's being used in connection with a page that bears our city's name. So a few days after that conversation, before we could send anything, the Maplewood Police Officers posted a message on their Facebook page, and which they interpreted that conversation to be one in which we were accusing them of openly displaying a symbol of hatred and racism, and that this was appalling for us to do this, and that dismissing that flag was dismissing them. And then what ensued after that was, uh, upsetting to say the least. And so I had a few concerns that that whole, uh, what happened, um, some concerns that, that raised for me. Um, the first, it's really unclear to me what the Maplewood Police Officers Association hoped to accomplish by that post. I don't, um, I guess to me, it made sense if they had just gotten us communication, sharing with us how we upset them, like how what we said was upsetting and, you know, maybe if we made mistakes, correcting those. Um, you know, I think that it, it, we could have had a very product, professional and can, and, um, productive conversation together, and I hope we still can, um, because I would like that, I would welcome that. Um, but the second thing that was really seriously concerning to me was what occurred in the comment section. Um, that may have kids listening, I, I would ask you to mute your, um, device because, or anyone who doesn't like foul language, because I'm going to repeat here what was said in that comment section, because I think it's important. Um, I read every single one of the over 300 comments that were made. And what I saw were our, our residents, people I know as factor residents, and Hugh even identified themselves as residents, very thoughtful responses, showing their support for our community. But asking the officers to just take a minute and think about the impact that that flag may have, not the intent. They weren't saying, we, we, we think you're racist, you're intending to do this. They're saying, just think about it, think about how people may feel. Then, um, and then this is what they were met with. And I'm quoting here, "You're a fucking moron, bullshit, maybe easy being, must be easy being stupid." One resident's post received 40 angry and threatening responses. Not once did the moderator of that web, of that Facebook page intervene, or any other officer for that matter, step up and intervene when residents were being threatened, which was disturbing to say the least. But considering it was a post that was sharing how they are part of our community and that they're our neighbors, they, they just stood by and let people be attacked? You know, I'm in a, the Maplewood Facebook Moms Group, and that thing gets nasty, I mean, really nasty. But this is the thing, when it crosses the line from disagreement about opinion and it becomes bullying and threatening, those moderators step in and they say enough, this isn't okay. And I don't, I don't understand why the police officer or police officers who moderate that post didn't do that. Um, what's even more ironic to me is that the people who were making those comments, those threatening vulgar comments, I went to their public, their Facebook pages, every one of them had a public comment that anyone can read that, uh, showed support for the insurrection or Capitol, that shared and/or shared the, uh, what's it called? The Punisher School with the thin blue line flag on it that is used by Blue Lives Matter. Um, none of them were residents. And so if I, if I could figure that out, certainly whoever moderates that post could. And so I'm not sure how the public is supposed to interpret, or how I'm supposed to interpret a willingness to allow, people, our police officers are sworn to protect and serve, to be verbally attacked and fed, and just for disagreeing with us, with the police, or asking them to take a look at a symbol that they, and, and think about how, and make those people feel. So one resident finally asked the Police Officers Association, what is this post doing for you or for the community? And they didn't get an answer. The next concern for me is I don't, I don't understand how they interpreted that conversation not supporting them. Councilmember Foggingham, uh, made a post on his page very clearly, and, uh, succinctly going through the ways in his 15-year tenure, this council has supported the police. And I can tell you in the three and a half years that I've been here, not once has the police department asked for something that we did not give them and did not vote on unanimously. In fact, in two, in the 2018-19 fiscal year budget, in which we allocated 41% or $3.8 million of our general fund budget to the police department, along with an additional $450 and $1,000 in prop P funds. In 2019-20, it was 44% of our general fund budget, or $3.8 million, and $42,000 in prop P. And finally, in the past, but the last year's budget, 2021, it was again 44% or $3.8 million of our budget, plus an additional $527,000 in prop P funds. And so 41%, 44%, 44% and unanimous in favor every time. I, if that's not support, then I don't know what is. The next point is this. I am really concerned, and I don't understand why such an incongruous and charged response was given to a conversation where we raised issues of racism and white supremacy, and which simply examined and asked them to examine the history of how that symbol is being used and consider how it would make residents feel. Over the past few years, this community and this council has made an effort to make sure that our police department is receiving ongoing anti-racism and bias training, and we are assured that they are, right, because of clear training. In fact, earlier this month, we received an email telling us that this month, every police officer will be trained in, in the, receive a training called Diverse Communities and Bias Prevention, and we were given a copy of it, and I looked through it. It describes in great detail the concept of cultural competency and how to apply it both individually and as an agency. And 25 pages were devoted to the civil rights movement and the history of racism in this country. I'm assuming this is similar to previous training our officers have received. And so, and that they should be applying to their roles as police officers, and therefore gives our officers who wants them the skills to respond to that, the council's discussion, by taking a moment to think about the other perspective, right? And then to have a respectful conversation about it. Instead, this post and what occurred in the comment section to me is completely lacking in any attempt to understand the feelings or experiences of the people that our police department serves. And for the police officer, officers who wrote that and those who supported it, I have real concerns whether they are capable of engaging in the necessary training and self-reflection to rid themselves of bias and be able to serve our community safely and effectively. Finally, my final concern is that when we discussed this at the last meeting, we were immediately told that we as a city and a council can't tell them what they can put on that page because it's a union, it's personal, but this is the thing. That Facebook page no way makes it clear that it's not associated with the city. It bears the name of Maplewood and their role, the employees, and their role as employees. It, um, has no disclaimer right up front, which says, does the views expressed in this aren't expressed by the city of Maplewood, they're not the views of the city of Maplewood or its police department, that they're personal. And it's full of many posts of pictures of officers who appear to be on duty and doing things for which they're being paid. And if they're not on duty, it's not clear from the pictures that they're not. That does not seem to be personal to me. And I also think it's hard, it's hard for me to believe that the city cannot require at least those measures be taken to make that clear, right? That it's personal. I'm almost done, I'm sorry. Um, this does not make me happy to say this. And frankly, it makes me really sad, because I feel like in the past year, this council and the police department have worked really hard together to serve, you know, to, to improve the ways that we serve our community, especially the most vulnerable in our community. But this is a problem, what occurred cannot be normalized and it has to be acknowledged, and it has to be addressed. I am not sure that anyone can draw from what occurred, other than that the officers, the Maplewood Police Officers Association, care more about a symbol than the people they serve. And I get how important that symbol is to them, I, I really do. But the complete disregard for what people who they serve and feel think, the inability or refusal to apply the training received to take a moment and try to understand those they serve and who in fact pay their salaries, it's not okay and needs to be addressed. Being a police officer is very dangerous and it requires a certain trust, you know, in the people they serve with. And maybe that's why something like a symbol like that is so important. But this is the thing, it also requires the community they serve to trust them. Because with this rule comes great power and, and, and a weapon, both of which are capable of at a moment's notice destroying someone's life if used inappropriately. I understand that I do not have the authority to interfere with personnel matters, but this to me goes beyond a personnel matter. This speaks to the culture of a city department, and for me, it raises grave concerns about accountability, safety and trust. And I would like to know what is being done or will be done to address this. Thank you, sorry, that was so long.
I would like to voice my wholehearted and enthusiastic support of everything Councilmember Schmidt just said. I'm, in particular, I'm really just struck by the tone taken by the public forum tonight and by the council generally talking about this topic, and that we are all able to maintain a level of respect and dignity for each other that was, uh, largely abandoned on that Facebook, uh, page. We have no idea who is all running this page. We've only identified one person, um, who has claimed to be the president and founder of this. Um, and even then, that's taken significant sleuthing by our community to uncover that. Um, I have no idea if this page represents the whole of the officers of our department, or represents the viewpoints of those officers of our leadership. Um, it's not lost on me either that we haven't heard from anyone in leadership condemning this behavior, um, or any rank officers condemning this behavior and the behavior of people defending them. Am I supposed to understand their silence as support for this behavior? Um, I'm not sure. Ultimately, though, for me, government comes down to vendors delivering services. We've heard from many constituents, both tonight at the public forum and at, you know, via email. I have received calls from constituents about this. Um, we are hearing that people are upset with how a service is being delivered. And I am formally asking that Chief Cruz join us at our next city council meeting, that we dedicate a part of the agenda to asking questions concerning the personnel practices and policies, not individuals, which should be within our purview, and other questions pertaining to the relationship of the police leadership and the union, so that these can be answered on the public record.
I will see that that happens.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any other council communications? And I'll move on to the mayor's report. And I just wanted to thank Councilmember Schmidt for, uh, a well-thought-out analysis of what's going on. I draw, uh, uh, the difference between the blue thin line flag and, and Blue Lives Matter myself. However, it's obvious it's been co-opted by, uh, or, you know, groups that I would not support under any circumstance. That association is unfortunate and, uh, you know, and I also draw a distinction between the Maplewood Police Department and the Maplewood Police Officers Association. But, you know, the concerns about complicity, uh, you know, are valid. I've, you know, I'm not on Facebook, but I've received, uh, my share as mayor of, uh, communications that were not favorable, that made a lot of assumptions with regards to, you know, my relationship with the police department. And, uh, you know, I find them to be totally irresponsible. I offered to go on the, on 97.1 because they had an article, uh, and, uh, you know, some comments that they had made with regards to, uh, you know, the, the, the stance that our, our council took, and they took exception with me. And I'm, I'm more than happy to discuss it with them. But, uh, you know, the concerns that were expressed, especially since I don't have access to Facebook, and the attitude that was, uh, so, a lot of the attitudes that were conveyed in, in the Facebook post were, were a lot of the problem that we're having in this country, and they're not part of the solution. And, uh, you know, calling us out, calling me out. I'm sure that Councilmember Schmidt's going to get, you know, some correspondence, uh, tomorrow, and the rest of us will too. And I certainly agree with Sean, we have been extremely supportive of our police department, uh, but we want them to represent our community in a professional manner. And I believe the police department itself, by its actions and its deeds have, but the Maplewood Police Officers Association, uh, I don't think is, is certainly indicative of, of that same professionalism, uh, that the, the police department, uh, displays. So I expect to get some comments myself, and, uh, I'll be more than happy to address those, uh, because, uh, these are issues that need to be addressed in our country. And I'm hoping that, uh, that the change of leadership at, at the federal level will help us, you know, move in that direction. So those are my thoughts with regards to the, uh, Maplewood Police Department. On another note, uh, the District Five mayors, all of us have decided that, uh, we're going to have a monthly meeting on the first Friday of the month. And we're going to be, uh, talking about commonalities, you know, problems that we're, uh, facing. You know, we need to address our issues, not on, just on a local level, but we need to, uh, address them on a regional level. And we have our council, our county council member in common. So if we want to achieve, attain any type of change at the county level, uh, this would give us a good forum with which to do that. And, uh, and further represent our citizens, not just in the city of Maplewood, but as, uh, you know, as with our relationship with the neighboring communities. So I'm looking forward to seeing what those discussions will lead to. And, uh, anything of importance to the city of Maplewood, I will report on in subsequent mayor, mayor's reports. So that, that is my report. Uh, does the city attorney have a report?
I do not, Mayor.
Uh, city manager's report.
I have no report.
Okay. Item number 16 is the second of two public forums. Uh, again, uh, you know, I'm asking two things that people don't be redundant necessarily with what's been said previously. They can show their support and limit your comments to, uh, three minutes or less, please. So, uh, we have some raised hands.
Yeah. I've got.
Hello?
Yep. Go ahead, Brad.
Okay. Uh, I just wanna, I, I'm, I'm obviously massively in support of everything that's been said here. Um, but I do just want to like reiterate, um, a little bit more of a focus on this one officer and accountability on how he came to be a Maplewood Police Officer, and accountability to why he was the one who was allowed to form the Maplewood Police Officers Association with his track record and his non-residency, and why he's the guy organizing this. Um, that would be, you know, the one focus I want to see outside of police accountability, because when it becomes, when it comes to, uh, having the chief into the next message or to the next meeting to talk about this kind of stuff, I'm sure, you know, we're, we're not going to hear a lot about this because, you know, for the last week, as those comments unfolded and people really tried to figure out who was the admin of this page, um, the police department was doing everything they could to make sure that we, the citizens of Maplewood, did not find out who it was. Um, it, it was like a whole means on, on, on how people were finally able to track down who it was, but there was no transparency offered to us on that. And, and now, once you find out why, you find out what that track record is, and you see that the Maplewood Police Department has never put together like a welcome post for this officer because they knew that the community would not support this. And, you know, I mean, so outside of the general accountability from the police department about that in general, I would like to see some accountability on why this officer is patrolling our streets with a loaded weapon. That's all I ever say, thanks.
Thank you. Next up.
Hi, uh, can you hear me? This is.
Yes.
This is Beth Newman, um, again, 7401 Gaila Place. Um, I just wanted to very quickly say that I really very much appreciate Councilmember Crossley and Councilmember Schmidt's comments. Um, it was exactly all of the things that I, um, wanted to say and couldn't fit into three minutes. And, um, I really appreciate, um, I really appreciate those comments and, and thank you for being a voice for us.
Thank you, Beth. Uh, I don't see anyone else, uh, with the raised hand. So.
One more. McIsland?
Yes, please, go ahead.
Thank you all, um, Nikalen Knapper, 7310 Marietta Avenue. And I. Thank you all. MacKylan Knapper, 7310 Marietta Avenue. And I just want to state a quote from Martin Luther King Jr., which we all celebrated last week. And that quote is, "Our lives begin to end the day we become silent about things that matter." And I appreciate that this council was not silent. I appreciate that our community members were not silent. And I just want you all to know that it does take strength and courage to speak out and speak up when we are seeing injustice. And I appreciate my community and you all, our representatives, for doing that. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Do we have anyone else that would like to, to speak? In that case, we'll move on to, I don't believe that there's a motion, there's a need to hold a closed session. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Then I'll entertain a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
We have a motion in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Closed. Meeting is now adjourned. Thank you. Keep safe. Be very careful out there. It's really nice to see so many people logged on and participating in city government. Thanks.